But what do you have to do in order to be an effective town meeting member? So, there's a continuum of items that I think a town meeting member has to do. The first one, and probably the easiest one, is simply to show up. And somebody once said showing up is 90 percent of success in life, and it may be the same in town meeting. Town meeting meets twice a year, in the spring and in the fall. Generally, over the course of a year, town meeting will meet anywhere from five to 10 nights in total. And so being at town meeting on those nights, usually from about 7:00 to 10:30, sometimes as late as 11:00, is, I think, the first requirement. I think the second requirement is to have some idea before you walk in the door of what's going to be going on. Before each town meeting, a book called the Combined Reports is prepared, and it's usually about this thick, and it covers each of the warrant articles. The warrant articles are the agenda for town meeting. And generally speaking, there'll be anywhere from 20 to 30 warrant articles. And in the combined reports for each warrant article, there is a statement by the person or the organization that proposed the warrant article explaining it. There's a recommendation and report by the Select Board. There's a recommendation and report by the Advisory Committee. And then there's occasionally smaller recommendations and reports from other interested town committees. And I think, in addition to showing up, it's almost vital that before you show up at town meeting, you have read the combined reports. If not cover to cover, then at least, I think, the petitioner's explanation and the Advisory Committee explanation of what each warrant article is about. Sometimes there's repetition, and you can go rather fast, but I think having an idea of what these things are about is important before you show up. The next stop on the road, if you want to do a little bit more, is to attend a warrant review that the League and the Town Meeting Members Association usually sponsor before each town meeting. And there, five or six of the more complicated or more controversial warrant articles will be discussed as a pro and a con by two different sides to give you a better idea and a chance to ask questions of what the warrant article is about. Various precincts also meet together, usually a couple nights before town meeting, to get together for the town meeting representatives from that precinct to discuss the warrant. And that would be good to go to. And then you can go on if you want. There are constantly during the year meetings of various committees and subcommittees and boards. The Select Board meets every Tuesday night that one could go to if one wanted to, to learn more about what's going on in the town. The Town Meeting Members Association has a list serve where people can write in and ask questions about warrant articles or anything else of interest to town meeting and to discuss it back and forth. And finally, I think what's important once you're an elected town meeting member is that you remember that you were elected not just for your judgment in how to vote on these things, but because you are a representative of the people in your precinct. And so while it can be rather difficult to do this, if you can figure out a way to do outreach to your precinct, either via, some neighborhoods have a Facebook page, some neighborhood associations do that. If you have email addresses of people, that's one way to do it, to let them know about different warrant articles that might be coming up. Or neighborhood meetings, or posting flyers. Like I said, it's kind of tough, given that there's no telephone book of email addresses, which would make it a whole lot easier. But if one can do that, so that one can keep in touch with the people you represent, I think that's a really good idea. So, again, there's a continuum of things that an elected town meeting member can do. I think at a minimum, showing up and reading the combined reports are what would be expected of every town meeting member. And from then on, it's up to you as to how many meetings you want to attend, how much outreach you can do, and how effective you can be.
Okay, thank you, Harry. Any specific, I'm going to turn it over next to Lara, who is also speaking on behalf of town meeting members. She's completing her first year as town meeting member, having been elected by her precinct seven constituents in May of 2019. So she has how to campaign very fresh in her memory. Lara?
Hi, I'm Lara Gerald. I'm a town meeting member for, I'm a town meeting member for precinct seven. That's a better idea. So just wanted to talk a little bit about why I ran and how I ran. It all started with kind of the ever-changing view of College Corner being on my mind and talking to a few people about what could we do to bring back more small businesses and things like that, because I grew up here and I was remembering how College Corner used to look. And someone said to meet with someone in the Economic Development Office, and I met with them, and they said, "If you ever heard about something called town meeting," and growing up here, I still had a blank face, and I said, "No." So I got a crash course in what town meeting was, and it sounded exactly like a great avenue for understanding more about how our town works, understanding more about how we pass bylaws and things like that, and have our say, and kind of how this town is managed. So I took my three-year-old, well, she was then one-year-old daughter around house to house to get my signatures, and ran in 2018, and there were six people running, and I lost. And so in 2019, I went back, I got my signatures, and I ran again. And I'm just also here to let you know that town meeting is, like Harry was kind of saying, like it's as big or as little as you want to make it. It is a wonderful thing to incorporate in your life, but I also have a husband that travels Monday through Thursday, I have a three-year-old daughter, I work evenings. So I don't think I'm your traditional, "this works for me" kind of person, but I made it work because it is a great thing to be involved in and understand more about giving back to our town and understanding how to make it run the best that we think it can. It's also been a great opportunity to just meet your neighbors. When I ran, I reached out to all the incumbent town meeting members, and I ended up meeting a few for coffee that are actually here today, so it's good to see them again. And, you know, now I see them at least given twice a year, so that's lovely, is in addition to seeing them when we put out our trash and things like that. So it's also just a great opportunity to really make your community feel smaller and feel more collegial. And, what else? Did I miss anything? Just want to touch on signatures. It's really not as hard as it seems. It can seem overwhelming to go to door-to-door if you don't kind of live in a condo or kind of a larger establishment. But it's nice. It is really nice to get out and talk to people. If you have a child, it makes it easier, I think, because you just kind of lead with them. But, again, it's just been a great experience, and I've really enjoyed getting to know more people in the town and understanding more about how this town works.
Thank you, Lara. Where we have both town meeting member representatives are here, I don't know if there's anybody that wishes to throw a question at either of them, from what you're, maybe what didn't they touch on? Or?
Just a little bit more about campaigning. How much, how little, how does it work? I think that really is determined by how your race shakes out. The second year, I did run unopposed. There were only five people running for five spots, and so my campaigning was a bit different, but I still did campaign. I think when you're running in an opposed campaign, then you really do need to do more door-to-door. It is sometimes beneficial to go to these townwide functions, because you will meet people, and they can introduce it to more people. The tough part about running for a town meeting, though, is only your precinct can vote versus a townwide election, the whole town can vote. So I think going door-to-door was really the best avenue. And also, always reaching out to the incumbent, even the people that were running against me that first year, I reached out to, because, you know, they can still be your partners and help you understand, and really, they were a great welcoming point to also say, "Hey, this person lives here, talk to them. This person lives over here, talk to them." And they can also help you with endorsements. There's a PACS endorsement that happens during campaigning as well. So understanding how to fill out that packet, walking you through what PACS is, understanding their organization, so those things happen that help you campaign. There's also something that comes out from the Brookline tab that you fill out to talk about why you're running and things of that nature that I think is put on by legal woman voters, correct? So, those were really what I did. I went door-to-door, I made sure to respond to the Brookline tab, and I reached out for PACS endorsement.
Carol?
Oh, just wanted to add.
Oh, go ahead, Carrie, sorry.
Go ahead, Carrie.
Thanks. So, again, it depends upon how much you want to do. I think if you're in a contested race, first of all, what you get from the clerk's office is a list of regular voters. Because in each precinct, you have a voter list, but in townwide elections, only about 10 to 15 percent of the voters actually vote. So the clerk's office can supply you with a list of people who have consistently voted in local elections, and people tend to concentrate on those people. If you can go door-to-door, I think that's the most effective thing. I am constitutionally unable to do it, to knock on a stranger's door. So I stand at the polls all day on Election Day, and if you can do a mailing to the people who do vote, either a mailing or by dropping it off by their house, I think that, those are also effective ways to campaign. And of course, the most effective way is if you can, what we call walk-in, which is when you have five people running for five slots, and you can't lose. That's the easiest way to do it.
Carol?
Harry mentioned one of the things I was going to talk about was the list you can get at the clerk's office. That's really important for people who live in a precinct that is mainly condos or apartment buildings, because you can't go door-to-door. And I know my precinct, precinct 10, there are very few houses, it's all apartments. And so having that voter's list and taking the time to do a mailing to the households is worthwhile.
Question? Regina?
Regina Farley, a town meeting member from precinct 16. At the Board of Select, when the FPAK final report was given, and a great deal of concern about the poor training of town meeting members in knowing how to read the budget and how to digest it in a way that gave them a responsible vote. I wonder what you think of it, and did you feel that you've been prepared? And if not, what would you like to see for your preparation? The FPAK chair was suggesting there ought to be training, so what do you think?
You want me to go? So this is my first year, so I am just off my second town meeting, and only the one budget meeting I've attended. I don't think it fully prepared me, but I was fortunate enough to have people with...
Could you speak more?
Yep. I was fortunate enough to have people in my precinct that I could speak to and understand and digest it more. And we came together for actually our first warrant article review, and that kind of helps you also walk through the warrant articles, because yes, the budget is very important, but also the warrant articles are just as important, and understanding those was challenging, too. So I think that also just reflects back to reaching out to current town meeting members, whether they be in your precinct or not. It is nice to reach out to your precinct to also help you understand, how to understand the budget, how to walk through all of the combined reports was helpful.
I think, I mean, I go through a lot of the budget, because I'm on the Advisory Committee, and we have to go through the budgets of various departments. And so knowing that the, for instance, the DPW budget is much bigger this year than it was last year, because the recycling market has collapsed, and they have to pay for that, and they have, and we got extra snow, is certainly useful. I'm not sure that each and every town meeting member needs an intimate knowledge of the details of the budget. I think it's more important that when voting on items that are budgetary, that town meeting members have an idea, a more general idea, of where the money's coming from, where it's going, and how much things cost. Because I have seen town meeting vote for items where there was no indication of where the money could possibly come from, where people didn't seem to care where the money would come from, where the issue was barely raised where the money would come from. And I know from sitting on advisory that, for instance, a year ago, we couldn't afford to fund a $20,000-a-year part-time janitor at the senior center until the state savings on the state, the health insurance for town employees came in, and the savings was greater than we thought it would be, and we were able to fund that part-time position. So that when I see items that come before town meeting to, for instance, spend an extra $200,000 to pay the Select Board a higher stipend with seemingly no concern as to where the money's coming from, that's where I think it's incumbent upon town meeting members not to, again, know the, every line item in the budget, but to be conscious of budgetary items, conscious of sacrifices that have to be made in order to pay for some things, and conscious of maybe what needs to be cut back, or what could be cut back, or what can't be cut back, in order to pay for these things. And again, I think we've seen it with capital construction costs on schools. A real reluctance on the part of town meeting to say, "No, that costs too much money." And it costs too much money, especially in light of the fact that there are four schools behind this one that are also going to need work within the next 10 to 15 years. I think that's more important for town meeting to be cognizant of than individual budget items.
Ernie, if I might?
Yes?
So particularly for candidates running for the first time, non-incumbents, there's a very short time window between the town election and the beginning of town meeting. There's not a lot of time. So we get the budget book in February, towards the end of February, and the combined reports come. That all happens before the election. If you get elected as a new town meeting member, you're going to get a very large mailing from the town clerk's office. Getting up that curve quickly is not easy. I would suggest a town meeting member with more experience as a mentor can really help you up that learning curve. To Regina's point, training would be a really good idea. Time constraints are real. It might be that there could be a, an online course. I've done a couple of them with the state, I'm not the only one in this room who've done them. And it's a pretty easy sort of slideshow. You read a paragraph or two, you go to the next page, they ask you questions. One question, multiple choice, they give you three answers. If you get it wrong, they take you back, and you do it again. And by the time you're done, in 40 minutes, perhaps you've learned something. But it would take some, it would take some effort.
It's good to hear about. I was not aware of that program, but it's a good thing that we should spread around to everybody. Okay, let's move on to the country, countrywide, I keep saying countrywide. They are town-wide offices, however, and I want to, we're going to go to the Brookline Housing Authority. Duties and experiences of a member of that authority will be explained by Susan Cohen. Susan was elected to a five-year term in 2018. All other individuals, before you, are serving three-year terms. Susan, tell us about the authority.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you. I always appreciate the opportunity to talk about the Housing Authority, which I think is maybe not as well-understood by lots of people as it could be. The Housing Authority is really the only department in town, and I'll talk about what that means by department in a second, that really serves low-income populations, which in this town is saying a lot, because there's really, even for people who are earning a good salary, a middle-class salary, it's becoming harder and harder to live here. And the Housing Authority serves the very, very poorest of the residents in Brookline. We have about 970-something hard units of housing, and we have about an equivalent number of housing vouchers where tenants can rent in private housing, make up the difference between the contract rent and what 30 percent of their income is. And why did I run? That was one of the questions I was asked to address. Well, I'm an attorney, and for about 25 years, I had a private practice representing housing authorities in and around this area, including the Brookline Housing Authority. And about almost 10 years ago, I closed that practice to go in-house, and I'm general counsel of the Cambridge Housing Authority. So I kind of live and breathe public housing and what are the problems. And I missed what this Housing Authority in this town was doing, for having been familiar with them for so many years. And there's some real needs that need to be met. And I see Roel in the back, and I know Roel's very familiar with what those challenges are. So we have these, what I think are structurally some really good housing, but it's deteriorated because of budget cuts. And there have to be new ways of approaching, doing these very, very deep capital improvements in order to preserve that housing, to preserve a place for people to live in this town who have low incomes. We represent most of the diversity of this town in our schools and in our neighborhoods. And it's also become very hard for people to use even their Section 8 vouchers, which help them pay the rent, because the market rents in Brookline are so high. And so there has to be a way to find a place for people to be able to use those vouchers in town. So I wanted to contribute in that way, and I decided to run for Housing Authority. Each Housing Authority in the Commonwealth has five commissioners, and how they're selected differs between cities and towns. And a town like Brookline, one commissioner is appointed by the governor, is the state appointee, and four commissioners are elected. Traditionally, one of those seats has been held by a tenant, and while federal regulation calls for a tenant to be on the board, state law doesn't specifically require that, but traditionally, that has been done. And this year, the open seat, well, the seat that's up for election is held by one of our residents, Barbara Dugan, and she is, has taken out papers to run again. It doesn't preclude somebody else from also taking up papers, but it is, one of the things that we really value as a commission is to have a resident on our board, and I think they serve the community well, to have somebody who actually lives in our housing or participates in our programs to be on the board. When I ran two years ago, I was unopposed. So while I did spend a good amount of time calling uptown, state, townwide officials and people on the Housing Advisory Board and other people who have interest in affordable housing, to introduce myself and to ask them what their issues were and to explain a little bit about my thinking on these things, I had a very easy time of it. I had started to draft some materials that I would have distributed and so on, but when it came time to, for people to return their papers, I was the only one. And so, very quickly, I didn't need a budget, I didn't need to raise money, I didn't have to do anything that you'll have to do if you run in a year where there's a contested election. Just last year, we had a contested election, and it was very interesting. And I think it brought out a lot of interesting issues and focused a lot of attention on the Housing Authority, which I think is always a good thing. So I guess you have to sort of look at the lay of the land in the particular year, what are the issues, who else is running? Once you're on the board, what do you do? In Brookline, we meet once a month as a board of commissioners. It's a public meeting, there's a public agenda. The practice has been to have a session at the end where tenants or anybody really can address the board with questions or comments. But the role of the board is to set the policy for the Housing Authority and to approve any agreements the Housing Authority enters into. So you really get down to the nuts and bolts of what does it take to really run and operate housing, and what are the choices that we can make as commissioners to direct the priorities of the agency, and how will we relate to the other boards in town? The Housing Authority is actually a separate entity, even though it has connections to the town. It is not a department of the town of Brookline, it is its own corporate entity. So we have a lot of independence, and I think that's both a good thing in terms of being able to run the operations in a smooth and efficient way. I think sometimes we get a little bit cut off from sort of the general cooperation between the different entities in town that have their focus on development and affordability in housing. And so that's one of the things that I think that we would strive to develop over time is to integrate our agenda with that of the town and... is to integrate our agenda with that of the town in inclusionary zoning issues and other issues of mobility and affordability in town. So we have that one meeting a month, which lasts several hours. And then we have subcommittees. And I serve on the Development Subcommittee. So maybe every month or every other month, I'll go in for a second meeting that month, where we go over the very specific projects that we're working on. So for instance, 61 Park Street is undergoing a major rehabilitation using federal funds. And so in the Development Committee, we'll go into much more detail on how is that going? What are the issues? How do we fund a gap or cover a contingency that we hadn't anticipated? And also, what is our long-range strategy? Because we have a whole portfolio that we need to figure out how to preserve. And so the Development Committee will focus on the particulars of how we're going to move forward, and then bring that back to the full board for their consideration when it's appropriate. And we also provide, to the extent that different people on the board have different expertise, we could also provide our own expertise to the staff of the housing authority, which is a terrific staff, but is a relatively small agency and could certainly use whatever input. And so that's another reason to think about running. If you have some expertise, if you understand housing finance, if you understand property management, those are all skills that you could bring to the housing authority, and they could really benefit from your skills. So if people have questions, I'm very happy to answer them.
One thing I would like to add, if I'm permitted here. Any of these offices of the townwide offices, when they have their regular meetings, I think it's helpful for anyone considering becoming a member of that group to attend the meetings. The meetings are all open, and they are certainly, you know, you can get a flavor for what the commission or what the committee does, and I think will help you decide if that's a type of goal of the town that you would like to assist in developing. So, thank you, Susan. Pooja Mehta is one of 12 trustees of the Public Library, with four being elected each year. Pooja, what's it like being a library trustee?
Well, Ernie, it's great. And actually, Chris will back me. Chris Chania Soket's in the back, and she's one of our library trustees too, so she can also vouch for how much fun it is. So I actually, why did I run? So I have a learning disability, and I knew that when I made little poojas that they may also suffer from a learning disability, because of the whole genetics thing. And so that's actually why I had a very, that's actually why I ran for the library. I wanted to ensure that accessibility was something that we put in the forefront. While I was on the board, we worked on doing, getting some money for programs for kids on the autism spectrum so that they could have free iPads. Some kids are unable to communicate. I have a kid on the spectrum as well. And I think we're all on the spectrum, to be honest. But we'll talk about that some other time. Thank you. We can talk. So why did I run specifically for something is because I wanted to make friends. I was new to Brookline, Massachusetts basically, and we bought a house. I was very pregnant, and we had to move to Brookline, because that's what you do when you're pregnant, you move to Brookline. So we did that. And I ran the first time. My signs disintegrated in the water, because it rained, there was torrential rain that year, and I lost by less than 1% of the vote. Which was sad for a minute, but I didn't know we would get that close. So me, my husband and I were like, "Oh, my gosh, no, we don't know anybody." And we even got, we were lessed. So it was actually a victory, but of course, I acted like it was very sad. And then the next year, I ran, and I topped the ticket. And then I ran again, and I also did well. So I feel like my message to you is, losing is great. You figure out what your mistakes were, you figure out how you can do it better, and it's all about relationships. So when you're running the first time, I hope then you'll run again the second time, but if you're lucky enough to win the first time, great. But it's all about relationships and who you're meeting and who you're learning from. Subsequently, a few years later, so now, actually, what does library trustee do, you may ask? Well, there's three libraries. There's the main library, not so far from here, and there's the Putterham branch and the Coolidge branch. We very recently did a little uplift on the Coolidge branch. That was something that the library board worked on very hard for a number of months. We worked with the advisory committee and Neil and Harry, thank you so much, for working with us. So that's something fun that you get to do when you're on the library board. You get to really work with the, obviously, your trustees. And when the budget is made for the library board, for the library, and some of our money comes from town meeting, from the town, some of our money comes from the state, and for additional extra programs, we're also getting money from, we're applying for money. So there's, you know, there's a lot of different pockets, and the trustees are basically the ones looking at this. And, let's see, what else do we do? We do the long-range planning. We hire the executive director. I've been on a couple of those searches. That's actually a lot of fun. It's a little stressful, I won't lie, but it's really great to get to see what makes a great director. So that was something that I was able to participate in. And I would say, I'm also a town meeting member, so I have a lot of love for town meeting. I would say definitely, if you can do both, why the heck not? Do both, that's what I do. Just if you're going to go in, go all in. And it's fun. I think town meeting is fun. The issues are, but it gives you a nice perspective when you're on the board to see what happened at town meeting. But I think I've spoken a lot, so happy to take questions.
Any questions about the library? I think it's important that you mentioned about, we've had a couple of people here who have lost a couple of times, and one or more. And I think that's an important lesson for us to have, and you just kind of roll with it and you figure out what's going to work the second time.
Ernie, if I might?
Sure.
So if you run for townwide office and you don't win, then you hang your campaign up for at least a year, and then you can come back the following spring and run for townwide office. But if you run for town meeting and you don't win, there's another way into town meeting. If you run for town meeting in your precinct and you're not successful, you will have 15 town meeting members and lots of constituents who know who you are. Invariably, of 15 town meeting members, someone will move out of town or be otherwise changed jobs, be unable to continue as a town meeting member. That now-empty slot is caucused in. You can be elected to town meeting by the remaining 14 town meeting members. It is not unusual for a losing candidate to find themselves in town meeting that way.
Thank you, Neil. Sharon Abramowitz is completing her first year as a member of the nine-member school committee. Three are elected each year. Sharon, I hope I got that right, and you're on.
Great. I'm always on, because I'm on school committee. So where to begin? I think that what I'd like to just, what I'd like to do is I'd like to start off with what school committee is. Here in Brookline, we have among mid-sized school districts, our smallish mid-sized school district, we have about 7,800 students-ish. We've got eight K through eight schools. We've got one inclusion preschool, and we've got a very, very large high school, which is rapidly heading towards 2,000 students. That being said, this is Brookline, so this is a very, very big, smallish middle-sized What can I tell you about school committee? The task of a school committee member basically boils down to a few core tasks. You're responsible for setting the goals and priorities for the district. You're responsible for hiring, firing, and evaluating the superintendent, who then oversees everything in the district. You're responsible for passing an annual budget. You're responsible for engaging in collective bargaining with all of the unions that work in partnership with the schools. And you're responsible for providing general leadership oversight and accountability for everything that happens in the broader domain of the public schools. There's a big one that doesn't typically make the list of the, that's basically the top five that you're usually taught when you go to your school committee training that's offered by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, which is an extraordinary resource, and I encourage you to look at it. You're meant to be responsive to the public, right? In well-functioning districts, the school committee is really the eyes and the ears for the superintendent about what it is that the community needs and what all the different constituencies that interact with the schools need. And that includes taxpayers, that includes voters, that includes teachers, that includes families who are using the schools, and that includes children. So your responsibility is to be responsive to the public, and your core goal ultimately, according to the mandates of Massachusetts state law, Commonwealth law, is student achievement. Student achievement and nothing more. Now, a district can define student achievement as broadly or as narrowly as they choose. Here in this district, we define student achievement as broadly including a commitment to excellence, equity, and inclusion for all students. And that's, it's a pretty amazing district. Now, once you get onto school committee, it's a significant time commitment. I would say ballpark, you're going to spend a minimum of 10 hours a week in meetings. You're probably going to be spending closer to 20 to 40 hours a week doing some variation of some sort of school committee-related activities across the town. That has a lot to do with the fact that in addition to your core school committee responsibilities, which involve historically meeting every other week, more recently, we're meeting every week and sometimes several times a week, there are four subcommittees that constitute school committee through which we do oversight of the district. And those include policy, that's where we make school policies, capital, that's the buildings, finance, and curriculum. We also, there's nine members of us, and we also have somewhere between, I think, 40 and 50 liaison roles to all other organs in the district and special groups that directly interact with us, like Steps for Success, like the Brookline Education Foundation, et cetera. So it's a big commitment. So why did I want to do it? Let's go to the question of losing, yeah? When I decided to run, I did not run to win initially, in the first, let's say, week. There were three incumbents who were running, and they were very, I mean, they were very strong education leaders in the district. The reason that I entered the race was to have a conversation. I entered the campaign to campaign, and that was my focus. I had a series of objectives. It had to do with the fact that two out of my three, two out of my three children have special needs, and we had moved here for the schools. There were issues that I felt needed to be addressed in the schools, and also professionally and personally. I have a longstanding history and practice of making strong arguments for community engagement, which is basically the premise in any context, in any form of governance, that before you do things, you need to listen to people. And then when you do things, you need to listen to people, and then after you've done things, you need to listen to people. And I felt like there was a lot of room for having a conversation about how well we were doing that here. So the decision to campaign was a significant commitment. It was a contested election. I had to raise money, I had to find allies, I had to seek endorsements, and I probably knocked on, I don't know, somewhere over 300 doors, maybe more, in the course of my campaign. I can tell you the first 75 doors are the worst, and that's with like, you know, seven-eighths of them not answering, yeah? And then it starts to get better. I can say that I had a long conversation with my family, especially my children, because I didn't see a way to campaign without being very public about who I was and who we were. And so I sat down really with my daughters, my son was a little too young, and I said, "I'm thinking about running. What do you think?" And they said, "Yeah, you should totally do it." And I said, "Well, what happens if I lose?" And they said, "Well, we'll have a party anyway." You know? And that seemed like a pretty good rationale. As it turns out, as I went through the campaign, I became increasingly aware that these people who I had seen sort of up on stages or out in audiences, who were serving in public office, were really people who were just like me, and that when you're serving in public office, you're just bringing all of the pieces of yourself to bear on whatever it is that you're going to be doing in public office. And so for me, that came from, my background is an academic, but it also came from me having been a student, and a mother, and a teacher, and, you know, someone who works for UNICEF and talks a lot about children and human rights. And as I went through this process, and I learned more about what the community needed from the schools and how the community was feeling about the town's commitment to the schools, the more I realized that like, I could do this job. And there's some activities that you get involved in as a townwide candidate, particularly forums, where you become really aware of what it is that you are sort of bringing to the table, you know, in terms of what the vision of the schools in this town could be, or what the vision of this town could be, you know, which I think you'll be hearing about from all of us, but from Raul. I got some interesting feedback through this process. I was advised to wait my turn. You know, I was advised to go through the town meeting process before trying to run for townwide office. I'd only been here for four years. I was advised to wait. I was asked why I hadn't gone through a more typical route of, you know, trying to participate in the PTO and becoming the president of the PTO, or school councils. And as it turns out, like, I like finance, I like policy, I don't, it's just not my space, right? This is where I realized that I could make an impact, and that's where I kind of need to stick it. But like, there was pushback, yeah? And that's definitely okay. Other than that, I mean, I just want to say, I think that the best part of not just campaigning, but also just participating in this project that is, you know, the town of Brookline, the biggest town in Massachusetts, is there are just amazingly good, smart, caring, dedicated people who are just trying to run this town and who love this place. And every day you go to these meetings, and there are just people who care. And it is wonderful to be able to rub shoulders with them. There are definitely bad things too, you know? But if you would like to know about those, I will be happy to give you my phone number. No need to discuss it. It's fun, it's worthwhile. I'd be happy to talk any of you through it.
Thank you. Any questions of the school committee? There's a lot, a lot of questions that are already being directed to the school committee, but this is not quite the forum for that. Okay, Raul Fernandez is representing the select board, also completing his first year of a three-year term. And Raul, you will have a lot of interesting stories as well for us, I'm sure.
Happy to tell you. Thanks, Ernie. So once again, Raul Fernandez, select board member. I usually sit over there, but that's okay. That's right. And apologies for coming in late. I'm just coming from class. I am a faculty member of our Boston University, also an associate dean for equity, diversity, and inclusion. And that's where I'll start, the fact that, you know, that three of the five board members currently hold full-time jobs, and also, you know, some people think of the select board sometimes as a part-time job, but it's another full-time job on top of that. And I think that's important to know. We are elected townwide, there are three-year terms. We're all staggered, and because there are five of us, the year that I ran, which was just this last year, in the May election, there was only one seat open. And so that's the sort of win-or-go-home year. This coming year, there are two seats, and the year after, there'll be two seats, and then it'll go back to my turn, or my seat's turn, where there's one seat that folks will be vying for at that point. So that's important to understand, just in the scheme of things, how these work. So these are nonpartisan races, so there's not, I mean, you could go ahead and tell people what your political affiliation is if you want to, but these are run as nonpartisan races. And the job is essentially unpaid, but not completely unpaid. There's a modest stipend of $3,500, I want to say, for regular board members, and $4,500, $4,500 for the chair. $4,500 for the chair. There was a vote in town meeting, this past town meeting in November, or maybe it was December, I don't remember anymore, but we had a six-night town meeting.
Fall, yeah.
It was a fall town meeting, where there was a vote that would have paid still a modest sum, but something more to board members, and that failed. And I think, you know, for those of us that are on the board right now, we all ran knowing that this was an essentially unpaid job. I do continue to be concerned about what that means for other people and their ability to take on this, which is truly the kind of task that takes, not just the time it takes, but also the energy, the difficulty of maintaining a consistency of energy with every single person you meet and not just at these... We meet on Tuesday nights, every Tuesday night. I was trying to figure it out. I think we took off two Tuesday nights in the winter, and then we took off a total of five Tuesday nights over the summer, but not consecutive. So they were kind of spaced out a little bit. And maintaining that ability to engage with people in the moment when they want to talk is a really, I think, a really difficult part of the job, but an important part of the job. And that means when you're going out to get your cup of coffee and somebody wants to talk about something, or you're on the tee, which happens all the time, can't get away on the tee. And... Or simply, our information is public, our email and our phone number, and people do email and call literally... I think every day I get either an email or a call, and usually multiple, from people with a question about something going on in town. So I think that's important to understand, too. It becomes a full part of your life to do this work. It is not something that you can box off and say during the hours of X and Y, "I'm a select board member." You are a select board member. And I think there are probably other folks that are up here that can say the same about the kind of work that they do. And so I mentioned about the meetings. There are also, in addition to those meetings, there are also committee assignments that we have. We have a say in what those are, although we can't just completely decide on our own what those are. We have to work with the chair on that. I currently chair the Small Business Development Committee, which is actually a committee that I got off the ground, so I was very excited. That's an opportunity also. If there's an issue that you care about, and you see there's not enough attention being paid to it, to be able to actually get started a new committee. And by the way, that takes a lot of work, and it's a whole other ballgame. I also am the co-chair, along with Nancy Heller, for the Census Complete Count Committee. We are... We do have a census coming up, so everybody be aware of that. And then I sit on other committees, like the Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, the Indigenous Peoples' Day Committee. And then there are other ad hoc working groups. For instance, Heather Hamilton and I, select board member back there, are going to be working with the police chief on a policy around like, uniform and officers when they're in uniform or when they're expected not to be, those kinds of things. So those are things as they come up, ad hoc. And then, of course, there's the things that we're very passionate about individually that we can actually start to move forward. So I was able to work with the good folks at the Housing Authority and the Commission, as well as our own town staff, to explore some issues that we had with Section 8 housing here in Brookline. That is that the value of a Section 8 voucher, as it was before January 1st, was not up to the standard of the cost for housing in Brookline. And so I don't want to get too deep into this, but for people who qualify at a certain income level, they qualify for subsidized housing, and you're ideally supposed to be able to use that anywhere in the town that you live. And in Brookline, there were only... And there's great need, but there were only 13 people that were able to use a Section 8 voucher in all of Brookline in market rate housing. We worked together. We explored the problem. We met with researchers over at Harvard. We talked to HUD about it, and we were able to make a change. As of January 1 this year, that voucher is now valued at 110% of market rate housing in Brookline, which means that anyone in the Commonwealth that gets a Section 8 voucher can come and afford to live in Brookline. And that's a change that we made. We didn't have to... The commission needed to take a vote about that, but we on the select board, what I want to express to you is that some of the power that we have is the power of convening, is to be able to pull people together about an issue that really matters, not just to us, but people in town, to get folks together and say, "Look, I don't know the answer to this. I'm not a housing expert, but I know there's a problem here. I hear it from people. I look at the data. It shows that it's a problem, and I think we need to do something about it." Another example, I'm working currently with, again, the PHA and the Health Commissioner, Dr. Swanny Jett, to explore childcare for low-income folks in Brookline, how they're getting access to childcare. Is it suitable? Is it working? One of the things that we've heard from folks, for instance, is that they're able to get childcare vouchers, different type of voucher now, but they're not able to use those vouchers in Brookline because either they're not being accepted, there's not enough places that they can get accepted, the value doesn't meet the cost of childcare in Brookline, and instead, they're forced to use those outside of town. And I don't know about you, but I just think it's morally wrong that people that are raising kids here in our town and have access to these kinds of vouchers can't use them in the town where they live. So I don't know what the right solution is to that yet. We're in the early stages of trying to get our handle on how big the problem is, what, you know, the nature of the problem. But that's what we're doing, is getting together, talking about it, putting the right people in the right space, and actually making changes. So, you know, there's all the stuff I said before about how hard this job is and how long it takes, you know, the time that it takes and the energy that it drains out of your life, but also there are these moments where you have the ability to make real tangible change in people's lives. And for me, that definitely certainly makes it worth it. The other thing that I really enjoy is now the ability to engage with folks in other communities in the area. So I was... I met up with, in Marlborough, I had a city councillor take me on a tour of her town, and we talked about things like development. We talked about things like firehouses, and we talked about all the other kind of municipal concerns and how, you know, things match up with what they're dealing with in Marlborough and us in Brookline and how they don't. Tomorrow, I'm meeting with the city councillor from Cambridge and many others. So that's a really, for me, enjoyable part of the job is to get to engage with other people who are doing this work and facing, in some cases, very similar challenges and to learn from one another and even to push one another on what we're doing. So I'll just talk briefly before I wrap up about why I ran for this position in the first place and what it was like. I was a town meeting member first, and again, I've only... I've been living in the town now for, I think, about eight years. So first five years I'm living in Brookline, I'm just living here, enjoying this place. Living Coolidge Corner, people, it's great, right? And so just living here, enjoying the place, like really making the most out of it. I work at BU. I walk to work. I mean, beautiful, beautiful experience, right? And then, you know, I met someone who actually was a town meeting member. He was the boyfriend of a friend of mine who told me about this thing. Didn't even know how this town was governed. Maybe some people out there are thinking the same, learning a lot tonight. And that got me, and I said, "You know, that's the least I could do for a community that I really enjoy living in, is to just participate and get to know more about what's happening and, you know, give my little say about what I think amongst the 240 other, you know, 239 other town meeting members." And then when I got more involved, you know, I think I found that I saw that there were problems and issues that I thought I can help address. Now, here's the thing. You may end up running for one or more of these offices at some point because of an issue, like one issue. And I've talked to so many people, whether they run for town meeting or something else, that there was one issue that got them riled up to run for office. And that's great, because it does... Because understanding the time that it takes, you kind of do need something to like, be your core of why I'm going to do this. What you find when you get in the job is that you're not... That's not the only issue that you can talk about or that you can work on. And in fact, you need to be here for all issues and to be able to represent people from different walks of life from you, that have different concerns, that don't impact you. I'm a renter. Others are homeowners. We have homeowners on the board, and there are renters out there. You know, like, there are folks that aren't living the same Brookline experience as you, and you still need to listen to their concerns. And damn, you need to do something about it, right? You need to help them find a solution or, you know, work. I mean, I wrote down what you said earlier, leadership oversight and accountability. That's exactly it, what Sharon said earlier. So for me, that's been my experience. It is a townwide race. I ran it like it mattered. So a campaign manager and a group of people, what they call your kitchen cabinet that you get together, and they help you like, actually put... I had no clue how to run a real race when I ran for select board. I had no clue. And I put together some people that actually knew what they were doing, that really helped me out. And then the key thing is, you go out there and meet as many people as possible. You tell them exactly what you're about, exactly what you'd like to accomplish, and they either vote for you, or they don't, or they don't, you know? And for me, I was sort of in this similar mindset, like, I think I've got something to contribute here, but if the people of Brookline think somebody else will be better, well, good, up to the people of Brookline to decide that. That's fine. But I'm just going to be honest and open about what I think about this town and how I think I can help in some small way make us better. So I'll stop there. I don't know if you want to do questions now, or we can do it at the end. I know others have to have a chance to talk, too, but thanks for the opportunity to share a little bit with you.
Thank you, Raul. Any other... I'd like to mention a couple of things that I know the select board also takes a look at all of the warrant articles that come before town meeting, and they decide on whether to support it or not. And their decisions are reflected in the combined reports that Harry showed us earlier. And it's a significant amount of time that is spent as a town meeting, as a select board member. And certainly, we pass our hat out to you for serving in that capacity.
Can I just say briefly? I don't know if it was mentioned before, so I didn't want to mention anything that might have been mentioned before, but the separation of powers there, the select board serving as the executive, basically, you know, as a person, I'm one-fifth of a mayor, right? If you think about a different type of system. And the town meeting serving as the legislative body. So I think what Ernie said is important, that we make a recommendation. And one of the things I often say to town meeting members is, "You're welcome to ignore it if you want." It's just, this is our best, this is, you know, from the select board and our position, this is the way that we view these issues. And we often, if you look at the votes, we don't always vote unanimously on these warrant articles either. So ultimately, that is the power invested in town meeting. I would say, town meeting is the most, as a collective, the most powerful body in Brookline, not the select board, not the advisory... It's town meeting as a body is the most powerful, because they have the ability to change bylaws in a way that select board members simply can't. We oversee those policies, but town meeting's a super-powerful one in this town.
Thank you, Raul. Neil Gordon is, in addition to serving as town meeting member to the Advisory Committee and Town Meeting Members Association, has served as treasurer for many, many, many campaigns for persons seeking townwide office. He can provide us comments regarding the financial reporting requirements for those seeking townwide office. Neil, whatever you wish to contribute.
Thank you, Ernie. So I'm Neil Gordon. I'm a precinct one-town meeting member, a member of the advisory committee. We know all about having town meeting. Just regard our recommendations. We do the best we can. I'm also a Brookline constable, so I've run townwide three times. I've served as campaign finance treasurer for three select board members, three override campaigns, and currently serving as campaign treasurer for one state representative. I want to say this upfront, I'm going to talk about the practical side of campaign finance and the technical and legal side. It seems that there are more people willing to run for townwide office than there are people to serve as their campaign finance treasurers. If you're running for office, you need to organize a committee to raise money. You can't serve as your own treasurer. If there is... If someone asks you, it's relatively light lifting. You need to be able to keep good records. You don't need to be able to do much more than keep good records. It's remarkably seasonal, and please seriously consider saying yes. And if you need any mentoring, coaching, or the like, call me, because I'm happy to help. It's an important part of the system. Okay. So the practical side, how much do you need in terms of campaign finance, otherwise known as money? So you can, you know, if you're in a non-competitive race, petitions, nominating petitions close, and you know, you're in, right? One person for one seat, or two for two, or for town meeting, five for five, not to worry. If you are running a campaign, though, for a town meeting, what is it that you need? So if you're going to knock on doors, and by the way, most people will not be home, right? So you don't want to walk the front walk, knock on the door, and nobody answers, and you leave. So you need something to leave behind. So you need some sort of handouts. They don't have to be fancy. They don't have to be printed. But you do need some sort of handout. They don't come exactly for free. But you can run a town meeting campaign for relatively small amount of money. Townwide is different, and I'll start at the top of the townwide food chain. For select board in a seriously competitive race, you need to raise money. The campaign finance reports would suggest that $10,000 to $15,000 would pay for a pretty good select board race. School committee tends to be a little bit more reserved. Library and Housing Authority, a little bit more reserved. The constable race, a little bit more reserved. We haven't had a competitive town clerk or moderator race for quite some time. We'll see what happens when those races become competitive at some future date. Remember this, if you're running for townwide office and needing to raise money for a campaign, you are not asking for you. You're asking for what you believe in and how you might help this town. And there are people you will ask, friends and family, who will in fact support your campaign. You have to... It's like knocking on doors. If you're shy, keep practicing, and it gets a little bit easier. What do you need for a townwide race? Count on lawn signs and buttons and stickers and handout, pump cards and things to leave on doors and door hangers and postcards and postage, and it adds up. And if you're running a serious townwide campaign, you are going to be raising some serious money. Okay. What are the rules for campaign finance? We all know about, you know, campaign finance shenanigans and who's supporting campaigns and where are they from and who are these people anyway? So here's the good news. If you're a candidate for town meeting, you are exempt from the state's campaign finance laws. And in fact, even Brookline, it has a campaign finance bylaw. There's no provision for town meeting members. So you can raise money for your campaign, a little bit or a lot, from friends and family. You can spend it on campaign material. You can spend it on postage. You don't have to report to anybody how you're spending your money. You can accept dark PAC money if you want, and as I said, there's no disclosure or reporting requirement. For townwide races, you're subject both to state law and you're subject to the Brookline bylaw, which is quite similar in its reporting and only has a different date. If you're raising money, as I said, you'll need to organize a campaign finance committee. You go to the town clerk's office. You tell them what you want to do. They give you the form. You fill it out, get a tax ID, take the form, go to the bank, open an account. You're now in the campaign finance business. So your donations, if you're running townwide, are limited. No corporate money. You cannot accept corporate money. No more than $50 per donor per year in currency. They can give you a check. They can give you a credit card, but your donors can't give you more than $50 in currency. No more than $1,000 annually from any one donor. And donations need to be from personal funds. You can't make a donation on behalf of someone else if you've hit your limit and say, "Well, it's really for them." No. And your donors have to be a voting age, which at least temporarily means they have to be 18. Keep good records. Counterintuitive, every receipt is a contribution and every receipt is reportable, including in-kind. If someone buys material for your campaign, townwide, that's reportable as a contribution. There was a case that went to the campaign finance folks on Beacon Hill, wherever they may happen to be, in Boston. The campaign was selling buttons for a dollar a button at some event with a table. Yes, that dollar is reportable. You need to get the person's name, the person's address, and so on and so forth. So be careful. All contributions, name and address is required. Occupation and employer, if $200 or more. Donations, as I said, by check or online are okay, but watch the online rules because there are some representations that need to be made for personal funds, that they're from personal funds, and you need to be collecting information. from personal funds, and you need to be collecting information. Reporting rules, if you're running townwide, Brookline has a requirement to report receipts and expenditures 15 days prior to Election Day. The state requires pretty much the same report eight days prior, there's a 30-day-after report, and there's a year-end report. As long as your committee is alive and well, there's an annual report whether you are running or not. As I said, if you're running for town meeting, you're exempt, have fun. If you, you know, if you're running modestly, and you want to fund it yourself, that's fine. If you want to get friends to, and constituents, to help chip in, run a more robust campaign, that's fine, too. If you're running townwide, as Raul said, if you're running townwide and you're not experienced running townwide, take your passion, but get a group of friends and supporters together, who have been involved in townwide races before.
Making notes here. Okay, Neil, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for Neil?
Okay, I'd like to make a couple, or underscore a few comments that may have been mentioned or may be omitted. The League of Women Voters has a website that has a good amount of information, it contains actually a how-to-run-for-office, how-to-run-for-local-office document on it, which you should be able to, you know, pull this up and print it off, it's what, 20, 30 pages long and stuff, but most of it is campaign finance, which, if you're running for town meeting, as Neil has said, you don't have to worry about it, so that might save some of your printer ink. Couple other things, if you're running for any of the offices, the League of Women Voters will circulate a, it'll send you a letter to say, "Why are you running for town and town office, and what is your, what things are important for you," short biography. It is very important that you respond to that letter. They put the information in a voter's guide that is circulated to the whole town, and I will say that if you're running for office, and you don't respond, and they'll put in there your name, and it'll say, "No response." And that's one way of getting, one way of losing, unless you happen to be in an uncontested race. The PACS organization will also send out a questionnaire, and you really should respond to that, and they will, they will give you a, they'll decide on whether to support you. The PACS list is circulated around town, and a lot of people will respond to that, will react to that at the voting booth. So, there, I think that pretty well summarized, I want to thank everybody that has participated. Sharon, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to mention a couple of things. I mean, there's a lot of sort of details, like, printing things and whatever, just a couple of pieces of advice if you're thinking about running for office. First of all, whether or not you're running, knock on door, I'm sorry, whether or not your election's contested, knock on doors, because it's how you find out what people care about. People tell you their stories, and it's the thing that you don't forget when you do become elected to office, and you're trying to make difficult decisions about things that you don't always have the best information about. If you're running for townwide office, whether or not it's a contested election, call town meeting members. I think you did this, too. I believe that I called every single one of our town meeting members in the course of my campaign, and I learned a lot about this town in those phone calls, and how it works, and what people care about, and what people's concerns are. And just a small piece of advice, when you're running for office, nothing you see on Facebook matters, okay? The campaign does not happen on Facebook, no matter how loud people are being, or how much people are talking. The campaign happens outside of Facebook, it happens in the pages of the tab, and it happens at doorsteps, and it happens, it happens in forums, and very much in the community, like, all politics really are local. And then, the last thing I just want to mention is, if you are thinking about running for school committee, there's one other source of endorsements, there's a group called the Alliance for Brookline Public Schools, it's comprised of several organizations, Citizens for Public Schools, the Brookline Parents Organization, Brookline Educators Union, and they also have an endorsement process.
Great, can I just say one more thing? My other pearl is, if you are going to run for an office, create a new email address, it will save you a lot of work later. And someone once told me for this, there are two factions, there are people that are going to vote anyway, that may vote for you, and there are people that are going to vote for you that may vote. So, those are your two populations to focus on, you can decide to focus on both, or either whichever one you feel like you have the time and resources for. And then, definitely, no matter whether it's contested or not, plan to definitely spend some time at the polls, most likely all day if you can. And the last thing I will say is, don't let anyone tell you that there's one spot open for town meeting, there are five open spots every time. Sometimes more, but if there are four incumbents running, and there are five spots every year, don't let anyone tell you there is one open spot, there are five open spots.
Since we're doing final words, you just made me think about something that I wanted to say, is that I often hear, and it makes sense, I guess, during a campaign, folks are mostly focused on voters, because those are the people that can get them elected, but I hear people say, like, "This matters to the voters," or citizens, and I just want to make sure that we're clear on the fact that those of us in office represent all people who live in Brookline, that includes people who cannot vote, or not have age to vote, are immigrants, are just residents who may not be able to vote. And I just want, you know, I met somebody once when I was at the polls, and he was passing by, and I'm like, "Hey, you coming in to vote?" And he's like, "No, I'm not eligible to vote." I'm like, "Do you live in Brookline?" And he says, "Yeah." And I'm like, "Well, I'd love to hear what you think about the issues, because just so you know, like, if I get elected, I'm going to represent you, too." So, just, if you're thinking about running for office, just remember that. I mean, we talk a lot about voters and citizens, but we're really responsible for all the residents that live here.
How are we doing? Have a quick question. Sir?
A couple times, as I mentioned, according to polls, my dad was a poll voter for a while, and his job was to shoot people away. Can you talk a little more about the, in terms of the folks who are trying to run in campaign, there are rules about how folks can campaign? I don't know if those are in Massachusetts, can you go over what you can and shouldn't do at the polls on election day?
Sure, so, you can't campaign within 150 feet of the polling place, that's the door to the polling place. More often than not, when you actually go to the polling place, there will be a sign, a stand-up sign posted by the town clerk, that says, "No campaigning within this sign." So, you can stay outside that perimeter. If you're running a campaign and putting up campaign signs on Election Eve, so they'll be there bright and early in the morning, be careful of that 150-foot perimeter, because the stands won't be there. And so, pace it off, or whatever, but if you're inside, yes, they will be removed. You can't wear buttons, you can't campaign inside. But what you'll see at the polls is plenty of room on the sidewalk approaches and the like, except on Hammond Street, where everybody drives and few people walk, and there's sort of no place to be. But sure, people will be there, and for the most part, if they're walking, they need to pass you. So, outside of the 150-foot perimeter, you'll have, some of your competitors will be there as well. So, more complicated, every precinct votes in one location only, so if you're running for town meeting, there's only one place you need to be all day. If you're running, what?
Precinct 12 and 13 voted.
No, no, but every precinct has one polling place.
Right, but the entrance?
Yes, that's a different problem, right? Some polling places have multiple entrances, you can't be at both, thank you, Harry, at the same time.
But 12 has one, 12 and 13 have one entrance, but it's two precincts. Every other place, it's just your precinct. I used to be in 14, it was the Heath School. The only people who voted at the Heath School were 14.
Okay, so you're raising two dilemmas.
At the Rockville, there are two precincts that vote.
Right, at Rockville, there are two precincts that vote. If you're running for town meeting, half the people coming past you are not going to be in your precinct. Precinct 1, for example, we vote on what was Wheelah College, they have two entrances into the parking lot, and you can't cover both if you're by yourself. If you're running townwide, you can't be in more than one place at one time, it takes surrogates, if you're going to be handing out literature and saying hello to folks.
Okay, I guess we all set for what you have? On behalf of the League of Women Voters and the Town Meeting Members Association, I want to thank all of attending our event live, and those viewing from home on cable network. As noted earlier, petitions for each of these offices are currently available at the town clerk's office. Looking forward to a fair and lively campaign season.